Okay.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, welcome to our Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday. Excuse me, 13th of November. Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Wolke?
Here.
Mr. Titterington?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Here.
Mr. McGary? Mrs. Erlich?
Here.
Mr. Cappers?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have the minutes of our October 23rd meeting. Are there any addition, corrections, or deletions of those minutes?
Only that I allegedly made the motion, but I was not here, so I could not have made the motion to pass the last minute.
That was in question, that has been corrected.
And that will be corrected. All right, any other additions, corrections, or deletions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they stand approved. I am very pleased to introduce a new member to the Planning Commission, Ed Westmeyer. Ed Westmeyer of First Financial Bank, welcome. And we look forward to your experience and expertise on the Planning Commission, and we expect you to have read the entire subdivision regulations by next meeting. Sandy already has, right Sandy?
There will be a test.
I repassed it.
And the mayor has a few comments as well.
That's a pretty good one, though. After the recent November election, our Lynn Schnee was a member of our Planning Commission, and she sent in a letter of resignation thinking that we still need to have somebody on the Planning Commission to continue, and so it falls on the mayor to appoint members of the Planning Commission. I made a contact to Ed, and Ed was very gracious to quickly say, yes, I'd like to be a part of this, and it brings expertise to this Planning Commission. But I do want to thank Lynn Schnee publicly for her service on the Planning Commission. She will now assume a position on the Troy City Council. And to add to the composite group of the Planning Commission, I will be stepping out in January 1, and Robin Oda will be the new mayor, and will be on the Planning Commission. So we will have some gender balance, and we will have expertise balance in this group. And I feel very good about the future of this Planning Commission as they move forward to make decisions. So I want to thank Lynn Schnee. I certainly want to wish Mayor Oda a successful time as mayor, and she will serve in my stead on this Planning Commission beginning in January 1.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, first item on the agenda of business, we have the preliminary plan application for Villages Concord. Does staff have a report?
Yes, we do. Roger Hawk, on behalf of RL Hawk LLC, it has applied for the Planning Commission to consider a preliminary plan for the Villages of Concord. This subdivision is located south of Wayne Street and north of the Kroger Shopping Center Development. The properties within the subdivision are a mixture of zoning of R5 single-family, R6 two-family, and R7 multiple-family. The proposed preliminary plan is attached to the report. In 2000, the Villages of Concord subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission and council consisting of a layout that encompassed a private condo community. A portion of that was developed as condos, and now the developer is requesting to finish developing the rest of the subdivision as single-family homes. The entire subdivision consumes a total of 16 acres, with six and a half acres already developed. The developed portion includes 20 condominiums, a common area, and a lake, and a clubhouse. The remaining 10.02 acres includes 35 building lots, which are intended to be developed, as I said, as single-family. As far as roadways, there are two private roadways already provided in the subdivision. They are Lannern Lane and Paul Revere Way. There are four-foot sidewalks that will be installed in the subdivision along the roadway, and the private roads will be reported with an access easement to allow access throughout the privately-owned roads. The private roads will remain private and will not become part of the public roadway system here in Troy. Since the last time the Planning Commission met and heard concerning the Villages of Concord, there has been an access easement that will now allow access from Wayne Street through the development on Paul Revere Way, and then out onto Laurel Tree Court. Due to having this access agreement from Wayne Street onto Paul Revere Way, sprinkling of the single-family homes is no longer required by the fire code. The development proposes 35 building lots that range from 6,000 square feet up to 24,393 square feet. The proposed lots meet the minimum lot requirements in the zoning code. There was some question whether four of the lots met the required lot width in the zoning code. After some confirmation from the applicant's engineer, lot width is measured at the setback line, and all of the lots then are in conformance with the required lot width at the setback line. Open space, the developer is not proposing to provide any parkland in the undeveloped portion, and on November 5, I took a report to the Board of Planning Commissioners to ask for fees in lieu of parkland in the subdivision.
Park Commissioners. Park Commissioners, you said Planning Commissioners.
I'm sorry, park commissioners. And asked for fees in lieu of parkland. Two of the three members were present, and two of the three members voted yes, and have agreed to accept fees in lieu of, which will result in $17,500 going into the Park and Recreation Capital Fund. The city has reviewed the preliminary plan and its compliance with the zoning code and subdivision regulations. In addition, the comprehensive plan shows the area to be developed residentially, and that is shown in Figure 14-4, which is attached to your packet. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plan and appears to comply with the zoning code and subdivision regs, and staff recommends approval as submitted.
Any questions of staff?
Just one, it says appears to comply. Are there any question mark issues that remain?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, when you say appears to comply, is that just one, I just need clarification.
It's a little net.
It's a little what?
It's a little safety net, maybe, but no, it complies after everything that I have looked at, checked off through the subdivision regs, and with the zoning code. It does comply with the zoning code and the subdivision regulations.
And all the streets are private streets.
They are private streets, and...
I just want to make sure I understand that. Has, and if I remember, we had discussion previously, we were concerned if you need fire equipment to get in and out, obviously ins and outs you've taken care of with, but they have the width to get emergency equipment in and out?
That's correct. We had a meeting approximately two months ago with the fire chief, and he looked at the proposed plan and the access easement from Wayne Street into the subdivision, and he gave his okay.
Thank you, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wolke.
With previous effort in this area, you had a number of issues. Have those been resolved?
No, not in my mind.
For the benefit of the two new members, could you express what those are?
Sure. If you take a look at the preliminary plan itself, this area that's talked about access easement, the access easement is actually a common area owned by the Condominium Association. I haven't seen anything from the Condominium Association that grants an access easement or agrees to grant an access easement. In addition to that, the condo declarations, a review of the condo declarations really brings into question whether or not they have the right to do so. The developer of this acreage was also developer in the condominium itself, and he had the right to go ahead and expand the condominium into these other areas, but because of lack of time, time expired for doing so, he had 14 years and didn't do so. But I really have a problem having this subdivision come before us again using private property for the access of 35 more building lots. Under the terms of the declaration, these streets that are out there right now are private property owned by the owners of the Condominium Association, which are 20 homes, 20 units, excuse me. They have the 100% maintenance responsibilities for those streets, yet we're putting 34, 35 more houses in that common, in that subdivision, and I don't agree that that's proper. Okay, that's one thing. The other thing, we'll call on you in a minute, the other thing is the right-of-way easement that was presented. Mr. McGary sat here and questioned that right-of-way at the last meeting back in March. The right-of-way easement only deals with the north one-half of that vacated area. Now, I understand the fire department has indicated that that's enough of a right-of-way for them to satisfy their sprinkling problems, but once again, I'm trying to foresee the problems that might come down the pike for our citizens, and I see that as a problem also. In addition, the right-of-way easement agreement goes to the benefit of Sunshine Valley Holdings LLC, RL Hawk, the residents of the Villages of Concord, their invitees in any emergency or law enforcement. There's no reference in here to a number of the other owners of the Condominium Association, and certainly not Mr. Kissing, Kenninger, who the developer transferred a lot and got it back by engineering for some reason. That lot doesn't have any access at all to public thoroughfare.
Mr. Cappers? You're giving testimony, this isn't discussion.
I know.
I object.
You're out of order. So anyway, those are my concerns, just a few of the concerns, and the authority of Mr. Hawk to act upon the condo association's behalf is another concern. So those in my mind haven't been addressed.
Not to get into a dispute between the two attorneys, I've already been warned about lawyering without limitations, but he was simply answering my question.
Thank you for that, Mr. Wolke.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
What is the organization of the condo association? Is there president, is there board, is there all or equal members, or...
I think we asked that question back in March and really didn't get a good answer. Okay. Mr. Toome, on behalf of the developer, would you like to make a few comments?
I would, thank you for that opportunity. My name's Jeremy Toome, I'm an attorney. My office is at 124 West Main. I'm with the law firm of Waite, Toome &amp; Everly LLP. I'm here on behalf of the developer. This is one of many times that I've come here before the board. Each time that I've come before the board, I've met with city staff, I've been given a list of things that they would like for me to address. Those are things that are legally required of the developer in order to have this plat approved. We have complied with every one of those. There's a letter that was given by your own attorney, the attorney for the city. Mr. Cappers is not an attorney for the city. The attorney for the city is Grant Kerber. He offered a letter, which was provided to the planning board members previously, that before, at the last meeting, that we complied with all the legal requirements. Things that Mr. Cappers are getting into are impermissible for this board to consider. They're impermissible for the board to consider things outside of the scope of what the rules, laws, and the regulations are. And whenever, whenever somebody goes outside that scope, it begs the question from the developer and potentially from a court of law if it's a personal issue or personal dislike for the developer because the city's not enforcing or following, the board is not enforcing or following the rules and the legal advice of its own legal counsel. We, at that meeting, Grant Kerber said we'd already met all of the qualifications. Mr. Cappers said, he rang the fire alarm and said, well, the problem is, we don't have an access. So we went through Herculean efforts to get an easement to Wayne Avenue, which we really didn't think was necessary because the sprinklers would have actually accommodated that. We went ahead and did that to address the issue. Now the issue is about things that are basically a legal analysis, Mr. Wolke, that he's providing to you. He's providing to you a legal opinion, whether he wants to call it discussion or not, but it's a legal opinion, and it's not about anything that's properly before this board. This board has been given a positive recommendation of staff. I understand that you have independent discretion, you don't have to follow that, but I think that you're also eventually, at some point in time, going to be held by the standard of the laws of Ohio. And if we've met all of the legal requirements, and you're taking something that's outside the legal requirements and denying it, it's an arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable denial of our application. So I would like for the board members, and I'm sorry if I seem a little frustrated, especially to the newer members of the board, but my client has now spent years trying to use his property, that he's legally entitled to use it, in a manner that's consistent with the laws and the rules of the state of Ohio and with the city of Troy. He's followed everything that has been legally required or asked of him to do by city staff. He's followed every one of those. So all of the items Mr. Cappers are bringing to your attention are not things that are concerns from your legal counsel, and they're not things that are concerns from your city staff, these are personal concerns of Mr. Cappers. So I'd like for you to consider that when you vote today.
Any questions, Mr. Toome? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
As far as the Troy ordinances are concerned, on the matters that Mr. Toome talked about, the Troy Code of Ordinances has a general statement, I'm just going to read that. "These regulations shall help ensure the development of convenient and safe streets, the creation of usable lots, the provision of space for public utilities, and the reservation of land for recreational uses. The planning of attractive and functional neighborhoods shall be promoted in order to minimize the undesirable features of unplanned haphazard growth. I think the melding of public access through private condo property is inviting future problems for our citizens living in those condos." In Section 1101.01, where it establishes the Planning Commission, it does so in the interest of public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and the general welfare. Its purpose is recited in that same section, 1111.01. "The provisions of these subdivision regulations shall be held to be the minimum requirement." I stress minimum. And later it says, "Promote and maintain the public health, safety, comfort, morals, convenience, and general welfare of persons living and working in the city. These are high and admirable standards," and I don't think they've met up with the preliminary plan. Any other questions of staff?
Well, to me, this is rather awkward. Mr. McGary, who also had very strong opinions, isn't here. We have two new members, and I hate to see this thrown into their laps, you know, this quickly, before they've really become acclimatized to the Planning Commission. You know, my first thought is to table this until Mr. McGary is able to return. That would be at the next meeting, and I won't, no, he won't be here at the...
He will not be with us in November at all, he said.
He'll be here for the first meeting in December.
He is hoping that he is sufficiently recovered.
Okay. But I will not be here at that meeting. So like I say, I find this rather awkward. I guess without, I hope I'm not being unfair to our new members, but are you comfortable voting on this at this time?
I have questions. I am not a lawyer. I certainly have questions about the issues that have been raised, and I'm not, I'm not that familiar with, I mean, I know what the original plat looks like, and I've been there. And that's about all I can say about that.
I would agree. I mean, I know the property, I know the subdivision, but I'd like to know a little bit more in regard to some questions that I think I'm going to have, so I'm not necessarily comfortable voting on it this time, not just for being new.
I'd specifically like to know about the condo association, and if they have representation or any input.
At the last, I think it was at our March meeting, we suggested that the developer contacted condo association, and we notified the members of the condo association to attend the meeting, and they didn't. But to the best of my knowledge, there has not been a formal meeting of the condo association. It's been a number of years, so whether it has or not, I don't know.
My client is the condo association. It has not been turned over to the residents yet.
And yet, the law requires that.
Again, you're giving legal advice, Mr. Cappers. I'll note that for the record, and I'll note my objection to that.
It's right in the declarations, which I have been presented by staff and have read.
And I'll also note for the record, there's no one here opposing this, there's no one from the condo association that's here that has an issue with the plan that we proposed. This is now the fifth time that it's been proposed, all the meetings are public, everything has been provided to everybody, they've all had the opportunity to appear if they have an issue. There's no one here objecting, there's no testimony, contrary to city staff's recommendation approving this plat. This is costing my client lots of money in sales, and it's prohibited people who want to purchase and build homes in there from being able to do so.
At the last meeting, the condo association members were specifically invited to attend.
Correct.
They were not specifically invited to attend this meeting.
Well, there's, there's public notice about these hearings, just, just like for anybody else. I don't know what else you want my client to do. He has spent years doing this, and it's costing him, and you know how much money this is costing him, and you have, you have absolutely, Mr. Cappers, you have no concern for the financial impact on my client?
That's not fair.
Well, it's accurate.
It is not accurate. Sandy, did you have any other questions?
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, Mr. Chair. So the issue on the condo is that one that I, you read the objectives and the, I don't know if it's the preamble or what it is of the, of the code, but if it does come down to a, an interpretation, a legal interpretation by the developer who feels that they are the condo association, but they may or may not be the condo association, is that, that's a, that would be a civil suit between the condo association and developer? Is that where it ultimately could land, anyway? Is that what we're saying?
The problem with that type of statement is that, as a planning commission, we are to go ahead and...
It wasn't a statement, it was just a question.
Question.
So that could be, that would be ultimately the way it would handle legally in a, in a court of law as a civil, civil suit between those two parties?
It could be, if it ended up that way.
All right, I, I understand what you read, I get all that. I understand the duty and...
Why put that on the citizens to do so? When we have the opportunity now to go into correctional matters.
I, I understand. Some other question totally unrelated to that is, is more of a process question. I know in, in many cases with application, this goes to the, to, Larry, your question about timing and tabling. Do we, are we on the clock? Have we pulled the clock because we've had these back and forth? Normally, unless there are issues, and unless there are valid reasons for us to table and to keep going forward, we have certain deadlines we have to meet. Otherwise, if we don't do, if we don't take action one way or the other, it seems to have been approved or accepted. I don't think we want to default in that regard, so I don't know if staff knows that or if we have to consult with, with Mr. Kerber about that, because we, you know, depending on whether or not we want everybody here, that could be January. I don't know if we have that kind of flexibility on time.
Based on what I just read in the subdivision regulations, going back over that, it talks about the approval-disapproval of a preliminary plat. It lays out three options for Planning Commission, approve, table, or deny. And it specifically says, "If a preliminary plat is tabled or denied, the subdivider and his consulting engineer may resubmit a new revised preliminary plat. All required revisions stipulated by the Planning Commission must be satisfied by the subdivider before the preliminary plat can be resubmitted and reconsidered for approval." The only time limitation that it shows in here is based on an approved preliminary plat. And at that point, to go for the final approval of the subdivision has to be done within two years. But to answer your question, I do not believe that we are under a time constraint to approve, deny, or table the preliminary plat.
I guess I just thought of a third one, if you could indulge me, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So your concerns, have you discussed those, with this resubmital, have you discussed those concerns with Mr. Kerber? Because ultimately, he's the one who's going to have to, would have to defend us in the event that, that we end up in litigation.
No, I have not.
With regards to the interpretation of who's the condo association, when, you know, what the declarations say, because I have read them, so I don't know.
No, I have not.
I defer to your law license, and I don't have one, so...
In my past history as a practicing attorney, I've had a number of clients that received my advice and didn't take it. So that's not unusual.
Mr. Cappers, that's not accurate. Mr. Kerber did issue a letter and said that it was a purely civil matter and was not an issue for the board to consider.
Mr. Toome, I didn't ask you for your opinion.
I will clarify again, though, that I did ask if you have talked to him most recently after this resubital.
Oh, yeah, I'm only talking about the letter that he submitted to you previously.
You're talking about the one that's months old.
Yeah. So no, I didn't. Thank you. And he was invited here today, I believe.
I talked to him yesterday, he knew the meeting was here. I did not personally say, would you like to come?
Okay, what does the commission want to do?
I really feel, because I've appointed two individuals due to resignations of two previous commission members who were a part of this, but are no longer. Two new members, I feel bad, they're, they probably need to be brought up to speed. We just now gave an oath of office to one of those members, and just recently gave the other one. I hear what Mr. Wolke is saying, and I'm sorry, he won't be here at the Latin, next meeting, but, and we don't know when Jim would be here, but I think, in fairness, to bring people up to speed, I think by tabling this allows them to ask their questions, or to get their information from you or others that they, and also from Mr. Kerber, having looked at this in a different way since it's been a while. I, I really agree with Mr. Wolke, in fairness to our new members, and to maybe Mr. McGary, who, who did have some questions, and not knowing if his questions have been answered accurately, or, or the way he feels he needs to vote, I, I would feel more comfortable
I would be happy to set up a couple of meetings, a meeting with Ms. Erlich and Mr. Westmeyer, to sit down with them and explain the history with everything, the information that we have, if that would be agreeable to the commission.
Sure.
They can spend the time.
That would be helpful.
It would help me a great deal.
It's not really our decision, since it's less than a majority that...
Correct.
Certainly have.
Larry, you're going to be here at the next meeting?
Well, I understand the next meeting's the first one in December, is that correct?
Well, it's the day before Thanksgiving.
I haven't decided yet, the day before, which will be 27?
Yes.
The day before Thanksgiving.
The first meeting in December, I will not be here.
So you would be here in November.
The 27th.
27. And are we meeting...
So if we have a meeting right before Thanksgiving, you will be here?
Yes.
But Mr. McGary will not. Maybe he can get his feedback, or the questions. He's got this information in front of him. Maybe he could either get questions answered with staff.
I could reach out to Mr. McGary and ask him if he has any concerns that he would like me to address.
I just think, in fairness to our new, to new members, to make the best decision, to do their due diligence, I think it's only fair that they be brought up to, to speed and allowed to ask their clarification questions. So I, I think that this time, legitimate, tabling would be in order.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll lose color.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion is passed to table.
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
And in the meantime, if you would arrange those meetings, I'd be great, and find out from Mr. McGary if he has any additional questions.
Sure, sure. You got her.
Okay, next matter on the agenda is consideration of requests submitted by Mr. William McGraw, representing Evanston, Ohio. Mr. McGraw, would you come forward, please?
Yes, thank you.
Would you state your name and address and sous-traital number?
No.
Just name your address.
No, if that's what I have to do, I'll, I'll leave. Bill McGraw, Attorney, 210 West Main Street, Troy. I'm here in behalf of my client, Evan Thea Owen, who is with me today. This is a matter that has not yet come before this commission, but is a pending application that has been filed in June by the First United Methodist Church for demolition of a 1879 residence on 126 South Cherry Street. My client, Evan Thea Owen, owns the immediately adjacent property at 134 South Cherry Street, also constructed in 1879, and I might say lovingly restored as a wonderful old residence. The residence immediately next door is a few feet off the property line. In fact, there's an overhang of an eve that is, has a prior easement, if you will, for overhang of the eve that's so close to the property line. The, the property was purchased by the Methodist Church in, I think, 2013, and the purpose of my request today, and I'll relate just a little bit of background to it, I understand that the church would like to have this heard on November 27th, the day before Thanksgiving, at your next meeting. We learned this at a meeting with church representatives that contacted Evan Thea Owen, Bobby Phillips, lay leader of the church, ran into Evan Thea on the street in late October, just a couple of weeks ago, and they asked for a meeting with her. The church filed their application in June, no prior, no prior notice or contact with Evan Thea, despite the fact that the prior pastor of the church, who left just at the end of June, had promised to keep her up to speed on plans for the lot. No contact was made with Evan Thea. In, in July, Tim Davis of staff had requested additional information from the church. As of yesterday afternoon, the church had not submitted that additional information. Today was the deadline for submittal. I don't know whether the church has presented that or not. Tim is not here, he's, I understand, out of town at a meeting in Columbus. I talked to him yesterday. We learned at the meeting, Evan Thea invited Bobby Phillips and he brought Linda Bozick, who's Chair of the Board of Trustees. Linda's here today, along with Chris Hackaman, the new pastor of the church, who was my former pastor at Gamsberg, by the way, and also Ed Butcher is here with them. There may be others in the audience, but those are the ones I saw before the meeting. So, Evan Thea invited them to the meeting at her house, served tea and cookies. We had a pleasant meeting. I'm just, you know, I'm...
Embellishing, you're embellishing.
No, I'm telling the truth, these are facts. And so, I, the church informed us at that meeting that, that the hearing date that they had requested was 3:30 Wednesday, November 27th, the day before Thanksgiving. I said, well, gee, I, Evan Thea would like me at the meeting with her. This, this dramatically affects her property and the neighborhood, and she would like legal representation at the meeting to raise legal issues and points regarding the application. And I said, I, I made a personal request of Bobby and, and that, that the, that the Board of Trustees of the church, chaired by Linda Bozick, and I made, made the request of Linda also, as a personal courtesy to Evan Thea, scheduled a meeting for a date other than the day before Thanksgiving at, at 3:30. They said they would get back with me. That was October 29th, last Tuesday, and they got back with me and said, no, we won't. And so, despite the fact that this application has been pending to today, exactly five months, they were unwilling to, as a courtesy to Evan Thea, unwilling to request a rescheduling of the meeting at a date when I would be there. I'm going out of town, I made reservations, I got plane tickets, I got prepaid lodging and stuff like that, and I, I really am, unfortunately, I'm not going to cancel that for Evan Thea, God bless her. But, but my, my request is to ask you to not hold the hearing on November 27th. I had suggested December 11th, which is the next meeting, and the meeting after that is Christmas Day.
We're not meeting.
So, so I would, I would request as a personal courtesy to Evan Thea, whose, whose neighborhood and property rights and economic value of her property are going to be impacted by this if, if permitted, and those are, by the way, considerations in one of the purposes of the historic district, I just quoted them. That's number, point number one in the historic district purposes in your zoning ordinance, protection of personal property rights, enhancement of property values, and protection of neighborhoods. So, I would ask as, as a matter of fairness and courtesy, that you schedule the hearing for a date other than November 27th. If, and I'll make one final request, and I appreciate the Chair getting me on the agenda, I thank you. If, if indeed you are going to deny, deny our request, since I will not be there, I would like to make a few legal points at the conclusion after your vote, if indeed you're not going to postpone it, that you will not be able to hear personally, but I want to make a few legal points. I know you don't have the application, I have the ordinance, I've been over the ordinance a number of times, and I can make a few bullet points for your consideration. I appreciate your consideration of the request.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Commission members, this is an odd request. You know, it's, it's an application that had been submitted five months ago. Staff has indicated in the church that we need more information, additional documentation, whatever it is, and they haven't received it yet, so it hasn't come before us. It's probably not ripe for discussion, but as Mr. Kerber in his written letter, which I did review again for that other matter we were talking about, said, that this commission is a quasi-judicial commission. And as a quasi-judicial commission, I hearken back to my days as an attorney that perhaps a continuance can be requested and a continuance can be given. I don't know what the commission requires as far as whether or not a motion needs to be filed or whether or not it's just direction from the Chair to go ahead and place the matter on the agenda sometime other than the next meeting. That'd be the easiest direction, but Mr. Titterton, do you have a comment?
I have a question.
Certainly.
Or two.
Go ahead.
Or more. So, this is a, to be an application, we have not received an application yet, is that correct?
My understanding is that we received an application...
It was just not complete and we wanted some more information.
Exactly.
Yes, sir, the application has been turned in, but incomplete information for staff to do a full write-up determination.
Okay, so we're, so we're still expecting that inform, additional information?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we, we're, we're talking about a hearing, but it's really just our consideration of the application as a planning commission because it's in the historic district and there's a specific section of the code that requires the planning commission to authorize any, any demolition of property within the historic district. Okay, so there's no, there's no special public hearing, it's just going to be three, part of our 3:30 regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
Correct.
Okay, that was maybe one, maybe more questions?
Go ahead.
Got another one. So, to follow up with that, though, similar to the last matter that we discussed, once the application is filed, completed and filed, and, and ripe for discussion by the board, are there time limits within which we must act or something automatically happens like the demolition is granted or not?
I think Shannon's page turning.
She is, and I'm trying to draw up my question so she has time. Because I understand the applicant could request us to, to meet at a certain date, but I don't think there's anything other than making sure that we consider the issue within a certain time period, that they can dictate which meeting, which meeting agenda it's, on which it's placed on.
And to further add to that point, too, since staff doesn't have the requested information yet in hand, we're not even sure if that information they're going to turn in is complete enough for us to, to put onto the, the next agenda either. We haven't seen what we've requested yet either.
Yeah, but for the, but for the previous discussion and the fact that we're now probably planning on having a meeting the day before Thanksgiving, in past years, we've not had the meeting and it might have been a little easier decision to make, but the other weighty matter needs to be considered as soon as possible, so...
So, our code requires that when someone applies for a permit application, in this, in this case, a demolition permit, staff has 10 business days to get an answer back to the applicant, whether that be approval, denial, or requesting more information. Because the staff has requested more information, that stops that clock, and it doesn't restart once we get the information, it just stopped that clock. So, to answer your question as far as the historic review goes, even when we get the information from the applicant, the additional information, the 10-day clock does not start back up. Just a quick...
Does a new 10-day clock start?
No, the new, a new 10, no clock starts back up for the permit application. Just a quick perusal through, through the planning commission section of the code, I cannot find a date or, or a timeframe as to when planning commission has to hear an application. So, from what I can determine quickly here, I do not believe that there's a timeframe that the planning commission is under.
Okay, we probably want to review that because under that, the way I understood what you just said is if we, if staff has any questions about it, if we have one question, then we can basically take as much time as we want after we receive that information and there's no longer a time limit.
That's what I just said.
Yeah, it's, okay, that's what I thought, it's just, that's kind of unusual.
However, staff does not take as long as they want. I mean, we try to, you know, we get that information and we try to get that permit turned around, but sometimes there are extenuating circumstances that it does take a little longer.
Thank you. Third question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Walter.
I'm going to ask a question, I don't know that anybody in this room is qualified to answer it. You had indicated that we were a, a quasi-judicial. I knew the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I always assumed we were administrative.
That's what Mr. Kerber said in his letter.
Then, does the open meeting laws apply to us?
Good question.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah?
Yes, they always have.
Even as a quasi-judicial, again, I assume we were administrative, therefore, it would apply to us.
You mean in terms of, you mean compared to the BZI where they can go in basically into closed session to deliberate?
As a court can.
We could ask Mr. Kerber that, that's an interesting question.
Yeah, I don't think...
I don't know that that promotes transparency.
Yeah, I don't think the administrative, the, the open meeting laws apply to courts, for example. And if we are quasi-judicial, it sounds like it makes us somewhat of a court.
That's a good point, I don't know the answer to that.
Probably, it probably depends on the subject and the, the particular section of the code that qualifies as quasi-judicial.
Like I say, I asked a question, but I don't think anybody in here can answer it.
Yeah, it's a question for Mr. Kerber.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Kepers, could I make any comments? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah. Anybody have a problem?
Well, I guess my other question was, what is, is the urgency of it needing to be discussed and deliberated on the 27th as opposed to a future meeting?
Mrs. Bozick may be able to answer that.
Thank you.
Name and address, please, I won't ask for your sous-treasury number.
Pardon?
I won't ask for your sous-treasury number.
Okay. Name, rank, and serial number?
Name and address, please.
Linda Bozick, 2340 Rockingham Drive, Troy, Ohio. We do have materials to present to you. We have been in discussion with Tim and he indicated it would be appropriate to turn those in today. So, we have everything that you will be receiving. Our desire to do it on November 27th, we were truly wanting to go much earlier, June, and then there was some training session, I think, that came up in July, first meeting where your commission went through some training, and then we were told that we didn't have enough estimates and to seek further information. So, it's taken us a long time to gather that information. We've spent a lot of hours pulling pieces together, getting quotes from contractors, we've invested funds in that, and I guess psychologically, we are ready. We're prepared and, you know, we would like to move forward. Another piece of this is the representative from the trustees committee works, his work location is out of town, it's not, not in Troy. He travels occasionally in his work and he's in a pretty high-demand career. His days are pretty full and he committed a while ago when we, it was indicated from the, from Mr. Davis, that we could possibly be on the docket for the 27th. We requested from him to give us that time. So, he's committed to that and we, I guess for that reason, we'd like you to honor it. Also, as far as the church goes, we're entering the season of Advent, and we would prefer not to be distracted by these kind of things during that time. It would be helpful if we could get it concluded prior to that. Another issue, I am close to ending my tenure as Chairman of Trustees. That will be happening in a few weeks, and I would like to draw closure to this. Every time you have volunteers and people keep changing positions, it's harder for them to pull all the pieces together. And in our meeting with Mr. McGraw and Evan Thea Owen, he indicated that someone else from his office could represent him. He would like to be here, I know when it's heard, but he said, you know, if I can't be, someone else from my office could represent me. So, I don't know if that gives you further information and insight into our desire for the 27th.
Mr. Titterton, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's been a request of sorts for a continuance of a matter that's not even before us yet. What's the commission want to do?
It's tough to do anything when we don't have anything in front of us yet. We, we don't know what the information's going to show yet, correct? We don't know if it's going to take the 10 days or longer or less. If it takes the 10 days, it wouldn't get on the docket anyway, because you'd have the 10-day staff review and, and the agenda is, is developed, what, four or five days prior to the meeting, which puts you at more like seven business days, I think. My math is correct, which could be wrong. So, I don't even know if it would, would be ripe, as you put it, to, to be discussed on the 27th. So, would that be a moot point then?
Well, it's not ripe to be discussed on the 27th and we don't have to go through this whole charade, but the whole charade is for the possibility of it being on the 27th. What happens if?
I would, I would call it a mental exercise, not a charade.
Charades are mere mental exercises.
I would, I know about this project a little bit more, I mean, to be fully, I guess, open, I'm a member of the, of the First United Methodist Church, so I'm aware of the activities that they've been going through and that, so I don't know that I'm in for delaying, knowing that they've been working on it, but I'm to the part of, if we have the information that's going to be available, then I don't see why we wouldn't meet on the 27th. If it's not, then obviously it gets pushed back. But that's, again, that's my early position, I guess, being this is my first board meeting, but I am aware of the project on this one and understand how long the church has been working on it. Still, I understand Bill's situation, but I, I think if, if the information is ready, I'm comfortable, I guess, looking at it.
I have a question, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Ed, do you, do you feel that you would not have a conflict of interest in voting on this as a member of the church also?
I was, I will clarify, I will ask for the board to, I guess, educate me on that.
Okay.
So, I, I would not, if, if I have conflict, then I obviously would abstain from voting. So, I just put my two cents in in regards to...
That would be a question for Mr. Kerber.
Sure.
Sure.
We do have a question from... Yeah, we do. Mr. Kerber really should have...
Having asked Mr. Kerber about such things, I think he's going to advise that he will not advise individual members, but he will give a blanket definition of what a conflict of interest is.
Which should be telling.
Sure. I wanted to bring it up, and I'm more happy to get that information so that there is not.
Well, as long as we're bringing things up, I'm going to let you know that Bill McGraw was my former law partner, real estate partner, et cetera, and that I am interested in. I would vote at this issue, is it a procedural issue and not substantive? But when it comes to the substantive issue, since he represents the opposing owner, I will have to abstain because he's also my current attorney in an estate matter I'm the executor of. So I know that would be a conflict of interest. Yes.
Are we even going to have a quorum for this such meeting that may or may not take place?
It takes four votes to approve it.
So who doesn't have a conflict?
It would take four votes to approve the application for demolition.
Quite frankly, I can remember a situation in Urbana where it had to go to referendum because the planning commission could not make a decision based on conflicts of interest.
Did you have some other comment? You're standing there.
No, I can, I can. I can keep talking, but I think I've said quite enough, maybe?
Bill, let me ask you this, because Linda made the comment that you had said that you could have somebody else representing Mrs. Owens.
I don't...
Is that true?
I don't remember saying that. I'm the one best suited, and I've represented Evan Thea for many years. And so I would not be comfortable acting in her best interest to have another person of our attorney staff represent her at the meeting. I think her interest is, you know, she's the one most affected, potentially affected by the demolition of this structure from 1879. And I have safety concerns and other concerns that I would express at the hearing if I was here. And if you are, if you are not, if you're not of a mind to hold the hearing on another date, the application's been pending since June. The request for information went out in July from Tim Davis, and it is just being presented, I guess, today. So I would hope that, and Evan Thea was not contacted by anybody from the church until Bobby ran into her on the street. I would hope that in the interest of fairness, that you would kindly consider a request to hold it on a date when I could be here with her.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Thank you. I personally don't have any problem with an extension. Just indicating that at least the hearing, the application to be submitted to us for consideration would be at our December meeting. That's my position.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Titterton.
Well, I guess I'm a little torn. The transparency, I think, is important, especially when we're dealing with the demolition of a 100-plus-year-old structure. However, I also don't want to penalize the applicant after going back and forth a couple of times, I believe, to provide us additional information so we have a thorough and complete package because it is such an emotional issue, if nothing else. My question, though, is, and so I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure postponing the hearing, or hearing, no, I'm saying it. The agenda item into December is fair to all. But that doesn't mean that there has to be a decision that's made at that 27th meeting. Is that correct? We're not under any obligation to make a decision...
You have the ability to approve, deny, or table.
There's your answer.
So what you're suggesting, maybe, is we hear the application on 27th if it's ripe. We ask questions, but we table the decision until the following year.
Well, I don't want to table some, I don't want to go that far to say, I'd suggest we table a matter that hasn't even come before us yet. So I'm just trying to think it all through. But I'm anticipating, I mean, I don't really, at this point, just having heard some of the back and forth, being a member of the staff and in a kind of unique position sitting up at the dais, that it's going to be a very cut-and-dry, easy discussion or decision. So if I had to guess, which I've done in the past, I really would not, I would guess that it would probably go to a second hearing. And in a matter such as this, having multiple discussions, multiple meetings, you know, may tend to bring out more information both ways and allow us to deliberate a little bit more over the matter. You know, I know we shouldn't make a commitment to table something after we've heard it when we don't even know it's going to show up on the 27th. But in my mind, that would be the way to keep the process going, be fair to the applicant, and then also provide Mr. McGraw and Thea an opportunity to weigh in.
Mr. Chair, that would seem to be a reasonable compromise to start the process, let the church present. And if there were people that could attend, Evan Thea included on that date, she would be, I presume, permitted to speak. I could attend the next meeting. If you re-upped it or re-brought it up for consideration, I could attend the next meeting and make my legal points. And that would seem to be, that would seem to be okay to me. December 11th would be the meeting. Mr. Wolke can't be there.
Shannon, is there a requirement for a public hearing demolition?
No. It's all part of the historic overlay district. So it's the same as if someone were painting their home. It's just asking for a certificate of appropriateness.
I think you love the aesthetic architectural review part.
I assume there could be others of interest that had an interest in the issue in the historic district or other residents of the city. But at least I'm told there is interest.
Well, unless there's any objection by any of the planning commissions, I think we'll just let it stand that way then.
All right. That assumes that staff will have their review and be ready for...
Of course.
The 27th, then, correct?
If we receive a complete application, the additional information that is required, it would be ready by the 27th.
I have requested that from Tim, and he's promised to give me the information when it's submitted. And so we'll have a chance to look at it also. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay. Next matter on the agenda is the appointment of a planning commission member to the Community Reinvestment Housing Council for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2021. B. Mayhem had this position in the past. Is there any manner on a commission that would volunteer for such a position? Sandy Ehrlich, thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate your volunteering for that.
Certainly.
I think it would be appropriate if we had a motion appointing Sandy Ehrlich to the CRA, and I'll make such a motion. Second by Mr. Wolke. Please, Paul McGraw.
Why don't you vote on myself?
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Yes. It's not a conflict of interest.
Mrs. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Staff have anything else to run before the commission?
I have two items, sir, just quickly. Beth Kerber, just a matter of note, Beth Kerber, the owner of Three Weird Sisters, notified staff that on October 27th, she removed the awning in front of her building. When the awning next door was removed quite a while ago, it has now created some type of issue with every time it rains, now water runs behind her awning and down into her basement. And so a couple of weeks ago, when we had all that rain, it flooded her basement. So she took the awning off, and it doesn't flood the basement now. In the very near future, she will be coming before planning commission with an overall design plan for her building, and that will include the awning.
Does the removal of the awning require any action to be taken by the commission in historic district?
Yes.
It does?
Yes. This is more of an emergency-type situation.
Question. Second matter?
I just wanted to remind everyone that December 6th, which is a Friday, the Planning and Zoning Workshop that is held at Sinclair, it has all different types of little charrettes that you can go to and symposiums. And it's open to our Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission. And if anyone's interested in going, if you'll get ahold of Tim Davis, he is the one who is organizing that for our members, and he would get you signed up.
Any questions of staff? Commission have anything else they want to address?
I would just entertain to our newest members that normally things move a lot more routine than they have today. You walked into a couple of very interesting discussions for our future. So normally, I think everybody would say, we get our homework, and we do our diligence, and we move forward pretty quickly with a lot of requests. These are two unique situations that we're dealing with. Just want you to know. Don't bail on us yet.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just want to go back to saying I didn't know I'd have to bring my crystal ball with me to see into the future of when I agreed to serve.
Duly noted. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ed, you want to make that motion?
I'll make that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All of us, the papers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. We stand adjourned.